Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meeting is broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy is absent today. Councilwoman Bag?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you give us freely, Father. Thank you for Jesus and forgiveness more than anything. Lord, we pray that we honor and glorify you with all that's done today, Father. I pray for your wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment for the council, the mayor and his administration as we go forward, Father. Just pray your blessings, and thank you for all that you have done and promise to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held October the 11th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 7th through the 13th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I'd like for Mrs. Sammy Hill to come forward from the Pilot International for proclamation. This is a proclamation from the City of Gaston, Alabama. It says, "And whereas Pilot International was founded in Macon, Georgia, in October the 1921, when a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization, and whereas the founding members combined their diverse talents in a friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. And whereas the Pilot International is comprised of 290 clubs and over 5,500 members worldwide. And whereas members of the Pilot International strive to further their organization's humanitarian efforts through scholarship and grants to support research, education, and community caregiving programs. And whereas the Pilot International is committed to service in an area of brain safety and health and supporting those who care for others. And whereas the Pilot International partners with Project Lifesaver and other respective service organizations to promote awareness for injuries prevention and care for those in need. And whereas the Pilot International fosters volunteerism, is more than 6,508 young people worldwide through its sponsorship of anchor and compass clubs. And whereas on October the 18th, 2022, Pilot International celebrates the 101th anniversary of the signing of the original Pilot Charter. And whereas Pilot International has been true to its mission to serve communities throughout the world for 101 years, and the Pilot Club of Gaston has served the community for more than 86 years. Now therefore be it resolved that I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do proclaim that the achievements and contribution of this worldwide organization, its clubs and members, be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October the 17th through October the 23rd as the Pilot International Founders Week in the City of Gaston presented this 18th day of October. Sherman Guyton, Mayor, Ivan Nelson, City Clerk."
Mrs. Hill. He wants to take a picture, ma'am. I'll let you turn around.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, council, and leaders in our community. On behalf of our Pilot Club of Gaston President, Carolyn Hammond, I would like to thank you for being here, for letting us be here today. The other pilots here today are Portia Foster and Sherry McGinnis. And they have been in this a lot longer, but neither one of us, I don't think, look 86 years old. But for 86 years, we've had a presence in the City of Gaston and Edwah County. And we've done a whole bunch, but I just wanted to touch on a few things. Just in the past four months, we have given poppies through the VFW in memory of our servicemen. We have helped financially with hurricane relief in Fort Myers, Florida. We've given scholarships to anchor club members. We have given pick-me-ups to the Sheriff's Department, and I was just reminded that the Gaston Police Department is ready for their pick-me-ups that we give them. We do help with Project Lifesaver, which is helping clients with cognitive memory impairments, autistic children, Alzheimer's. We have put tracking bracelets through the Sheriff's Department on currently 25 clients. We just wanted to give $100 to replace the batteries in all of those units, and we wound up giving $2,000 to buy new equipment for those. So we're really excited about that. We sent an anchor to the Pilot International Conference in Rochester, New York, and everybody at church in the community is always asking, what do I have in the back of my vehicle? Well, this week it is blue trick-or-treat buckets for children with autistic impairments or communication disorders, sensory disorders. And so we have a few of those left to give out. We help in the schools with school supplies and groceries and clothes and shoes. We sponsor a traumatic brain injury camp at Camp ASCA, A-S-C-C-A, which is the Alabama Special Camp for Children and Adults. We recognize September as Childhood Cancer Month. We recognized October as Down Syndrome Month. And November will be International Month through the Pilot International for Caregivers' Month, because those who give care to those who need it, and as Rosalynn Carter said, you have been a caregiver, you are, you will be, or you will need a caregiver. And so we will celebrate those caregivers next month in November. Through these 86 years, I couldn't begin to tell you the improvements that we have made in this community, in the City of Gaston and Edwah County, and throughout the Alabama District, and throughout the world, just by not flying planes as pilots, as we think of pilots doing, but as the old-time riverboat pilots who helped people steer through treacherous waters. And those of us who have been through treacherous waters in our lifetime, we know that the help given by our friends and neighbors have made the greatest difference. So thank you for this proclamation and helping us celebrate being 86 years old in Gaston and 101 years old in the world. Yes, sir.
Sam, thank you so much for what you do for the community. And you just talked about four months of your activity. How can citizens help with fundraising, and how do you get your funds to accomplish all of these unbelievable things?
What a great question. We just ordered our pecans. We have a yearly pecan sale, and of course, we take donations if you have a dollar or a million dollars or anything in between to give us. Last year, for example, one of our biggest purchases was the purchase of Axiom bicycles and kayaks for mobility impaired individuals who want to run in triathlons or kayak or whatever, or bicycle. And so we take donations. We're found at Applebee's Pancake Breakfast, or Chick-fil-A Spirit Nights, or all sorts of things like that. But it does take money, and it does take a lot of good people willing to be a part of something bigger than any of us could do ourselves.
So pecans is the main, it's like...
Yeah, anybody want to buy some pecans?
I do. I know my wife does. She cooks, and it's starting the holiday season for all kinds of things. So are there stands somewhere, or you just have to contact a member, or how do you, what's the best way?
Well, if you know Dr. Foster, Portia Foster, or Ms. Sherry McGinnis, or a lot of these people, know how to get in touch with me.
Sure.
And we would be delighted to help you out with helping us out.
Thank you. Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you again for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Toles.
We see that you're very busy, all right?
I'm gonna answer a part of that question. A few years back, you had a womanless concert deal, and Robert Avery and I dressed up and got up on the stage at Elliot and sang and danced and so on and so forth. I was Tammy Wynette. If you've never seen Six Foot Six in a miniskirt and high heels and a wig singing "Stand By Your Man," we raised $4,000 of that.
Somebody tell me there's a video somewhere.
I hope there's a video.
There is a video, and I've got it.
Thank you, sir.
I use it against Robert Avery all the time.
I really wish you hadn't reminded me that that happened.
That's why they raised, that's why they raised the $4,000.
So they wouldn't do it again?
No.
Thank you again.
I was just gonna, I was gonna embarrass Portia Foster, because she is, anytime, that lady is a proverbial good luck charm. Anytime she is assigned to something or a part of something, it's successful. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
We will continue with our agenda. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 108 Oakley Drive in District 2. This is Mayor Joe Brown, subject to the mortgage in favor of City Financials, assigned to Bayview Loan Servicing LLC, and subject to a mortgage in favor of Maude Buchanan, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in November two years ago. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Yeah, discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 305 Richardson Street in District 2. This is Brian Allen Smith, and Mayor C. Smith being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned structure. We filed it in April of '21. There've been no improvements, and there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1604 Malone Street in District 3. This is Annie Montgomery and Annie Montgomery in care of Rose Montgomery, subject to a mortgage in favor of Amos Cash, subject to a mortgage in favor of First Capital Mortgage Corporation, assigned to Golden Credit Corporation, and assigned to Associated Financial Services, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned house. We filed it in May of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1513 Garfield Avenue in District 5. This is Leonard C. Baloo Senior, Leonard Baloo Junior, David Masser, Martin Marquin, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Martin Marquin, and I'm here, I don't understand much about this, but I wonder what's wrong with the property, is something that I can do to fix the problem?
Are you the owner?
Yes, ma'am.
You own, you have the title to that property?
Yes, I got it.
Have you spoken with Mr. Harbison? He's our building...
No, I haven't.
Well, I guess my first question, did you get any notice concerning this?
That is my first notice right here, to be present today.
How long have you owned the property?
Since 2016.
If you'll have a seat, we're gonna hear from the building inspector, and maybe y'all have a chance to speak after the meeting's over, and he can tell you specifically what we need to do to get it back up to code. All right.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves an abandoned mobile home in South Gaston. We filed it November two years ago. There was a title opinion done. In April of '21, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, on our paperwork, it has a lot of names as to the owners or titles. According to your paperwork, who is the owner or the title this property's name is in?
I'm not sure you answered that. Well, we have a title opinion, I don't have a business. But we list the owners now according to the title opinion. Yeah, this is what it is. There's no clear owner. There should be a quiet title action, return the proper owner. The possible owners are Leonard Baloo Senior, Leonard Baloo Junior, Mr. Masser, Mr. Marquin. It looks like the title was conveyed by a bill of sale of personal property from Mr. Masser to Martin Marquin, which was recorded on February 1, 2016. And it was not a deed, it was a bill of sale.
So the bill of sale would have been for the mobile home proper, right? Not the dirt? Is that what we're saying?
Right.
So he owns the mobile home, but Mr. Baloo would still be the owner of the dirt?
Well, I mean, it's the reason you need a quiet title action, because the action that was taken is not proper to convey the dirt.
Right. Okay, sir, I'm sorry. If you could, just, just so you know, what we're speaking about here is, you say you've owned the mobile home since 2016, but you don't actually own the dirt, the real estate, the real property that it's sitting on, right?
Supposedly I do. I got a bill of sale right here.
Yeah, but there was no deed. You'll probably, the best thing for you, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not giving you legal advice, but you might want to talk to a real estate attorney, because I don't think you have all the paperwork you need to have full ownership of it. As far as the actual mobile home goes, we just reviewed some pictures. I mean, it's in a pretty bad state of repair. I mean, it looks like the roof has caved in in certain parts of it. There's windows that are missing out of the, honestly, just from looking at it, I don't even know that it's worth you trying to repair it.
I haven't been around in a while and probably people being vandalized.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, based on the pictures we just saw. So we don't really have a choice. We'll go ahead and abate it, but if you have some time to go out there and look at it, if you choose to maybe relocate it to somewhere else, maybe that's an option, but more than likely, it probably just needs to be torn up and taken to the dump.
It's possible, you guys can give me some time to do that?
Well, certainly, and I would tell you, we're gonna go ahead and move to abate it. That doesn't mean we'll come out there tomorrow and do something. I would encourage you after this meeting to get with Mr. Harbison, and maybe y'all can schedule a time for you to take care of the problem, because if you don't take care of it, then the city will do it, and they'll send you a bill for the cost to do it. So we would much rather you take care of it than the city take care of it.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And also, sir, what I'm getting and gathering, get someone to explain to you the difference between a deed and a bill of sale. Okay, because you may think that the bill of sale gives you the title to the, all the property. So have someone to explain to you, or have your attorney or whoever, to explain to you the difference between deed and bill of sale.
Okay.
All right, thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 3326 Madison Avenue in District 6, and this is Ronald O. Archer, Russell L. Archer, Charles Wayne Archer, Roger S. Archer, our heirs have deceased, Louise Archer and Roger Archer Life Estate, in care of Kimberly Archer, being the last known owners. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in July two years ago. There've been no improvements. There was a permit taken out the year we filed the case, and the work has been done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Second.
Okay, spin second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 and 15, our final public hearing is regarding a issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Jamar and Melanie Vincent doing business as M. and J. Quickmark, located at 809 South 11th Street in District 5, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license, off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to granting the license? Is there anyone who would wish to speak in favor of granting the license? If you'll give your name and address, please.
Melanie Vincent. You need my home address?
Yes. It's for the records.
Okay, 772 Tabor Road, Gaston, Alabama 35904. We are the owners of M. and J. Quickmark. This is my husband, Jamar, and I'm Melanie Vincent, and we would like you all to just approve for us to sell beer and wine in the store on South 11th Street that we are renting out.
All right, we'll have to present it...
Have you all spoken to the...
Revenue Department?
The Revenue Department about the issues with zoning, how it's not actually zoned for alcoholic beverage sales?
No, they didn't.
Okay, yeah, that's the issue you keep running into, is the zoning for that property was grandfathered in. The convenience store was grandfathered in to allow to continue to operate, but that convenience store, when it was grandfathered in, didn't have an alcohol license. So it's not actually zoned for alcohol sales. The zoning of the property would need to be changed for you guys to be able to get an alcohol license there.
Okay.
Because right now, it's okay for you to operate a convenience store, but it's not zoned for alcohol sales. So that's the problem we have to overcome. So if you want to reach out to the Revenue Department and maybe start the process of trying to get the property rezoned, then we could approve it.
Okay.
Okay?
And the big takeaway for you guys is, it's not anything that you've done wrong, and it's not anything against you as an owner. It's just that it's not appropriate to approve an alcohol license for that property the way it's zoned right now. And so that's, you know, that, you know, and I don't want to try to restate what he just said, but that's clearly, don't take it personal, and please, it's what the council has to do.
Okay, so we need to start the process of trying to, like, what do we need to do?
Rezone, is what you would be wanting to do. And there's some requirements there, you know, you can't just rezone a single piece of property. It has to be at least so much square footage and things, so, but that's where you need to pursue it. Because if you can get it rezoned to the appropriate zoning, then we can approve the license, but as it is right now, the way your property is currently zoned, you aren't allowed to sell alcohol in a property that's zoned in that particular way.
Okay, so we will need to go to the Revenue Department.
You can touch base with... And the Planning Department will ultimately, you'll have to go through the zoning review process, and then there'll be a board that will oversee that, and then that would come to us for approval. So it can, it's gonna take you a little bit, but that's where your time is best spent, trying to get the property rezoned appropriately. So then, the alcohol license, once you're in the right zoning, is much less of an issue. Our hands are just tied right now. We can't approve it because of the way it's zoned.
Okay.
All right?
And you should know that even though you go through the process, it's still not a guarantee. And what I'd like to say, not necessarily to you all, but to businesses or people who are beginning to establish businesses or relocate businesses, the first step that you should do before anything is come to the Planning Department or the Zoning Department to see if your business fits within that residential or that area or that district, because a lot of times, people will go ahead, establish their business, put all this money into their business, and then it's not approved for zoning. So what I want you to know, you do all of that process, but just know that it's still not a guarantee, because you gotta get, you've gotta get people within your area to also approve that, too.
Okay, and I have a question.
Yes.
As far as it being rezoned, is this because it was already rezoned? Because I know... Because I know alcohol was sold there before, so did it change like over the years?
It was grandfathered in. So when the zoning changed, all right, the existing business was selling alcohol there, and so they got grandfathered in. But the the understanding is that when when ownership changes and then a new owner attempts to apply for an alcohol license, unless the zoning has changed to something that's appropriate for an alcohol license, it it won't be granted.
So even if he's still the owner, then that doesn't help anything because we're just renting? So I'm just trying to understand because he's still the actual owner of the store.
Yeah, I think it would be the license holder that that would, when when the business changes operational ownership, you know, it's not just about the the actual property itself, the dirt itself, you know, that the way most grandfather clauses work is if you're in business right now, you can continue to operate, even though we've already changed the law, we'll let you keep operating. But when you go out of business, that's it. You know, that it doesn't transfer to the next people, you know what I mean? And that applies to the business, not necessarily the real estate, you know, that it's on. It's my understanding.
Yeah, so the two stops that we would encourage you to make, and again, we're we're falling short of giving legal advice, but these guys at City Hall can can actually hold your hand and walk you through it. Definitely, the Revenue Department, you know, you want to make sure that that you touch base with them regarding your application.
Okay.
And the Planning Department, you want to talk to them about the whole process of petitioning for rezoning. And and in as much as you are, you know, encountering legal obstacles or legal issues, you want to reach out to the Legal Department as well. They can probably give you the best explanation in terms of that whole grandfathering process and why the council has to vote against your application now.
Okay.
But again, we're doing all that talking because we don't want you to feel like it's anything you've done wrong. You haven't done anything wrong.
Okay.
It's it's a procedural process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will consider a resolution disapproving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. The police chief and zoning administrators have both recommended disapproval. The zoning administrator disapproved the license because the location does not qualify under the city ordinance. The addresses zoned are to multiple family residential district and convenience stores and other retail establishments are not allowed in residential district. This business was established at the time the ordinance was adopted and is considered a legal nonconforming use or grandfathered. A legal nonconforming use may be sold or changed management cannot be expanded. The addition of the alcoholic beverage sale is an expansion, therefore not allowed. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
We did discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The resolution approving the, disapproving the license is now mooted and we won't be, won't consider this resolution for approval. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing a special use permit for AT&amp;T Wireless. This is for installation of their equipment and modification of the existing wireless telecommunications facilities located at 4290 Old Pump Station Road. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is authorizing agreement with the Greater Gaston Housing Authority. This continues the community oriented policing program in the public housing community for the fiscal year 2023. The city will reimburse, will be reimbursed for the hourly rate of the offices. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is accepting of a grant from the Alabama Tourism Department, and this is for expenses involved with the Christmas at the Falls on November the 24th through December the 31st, 2022 at Nakalula Falls, and the amount is $2,600. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is first reading. This ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget, and this reflects the receipt and appropriations of the grant for the Alabama Tourism Department in the amount of $2,600. This ordinance was presented today, and since we've accepted the grant, can we bring this up for, suspend the rules and bring this up for unanimous consent to be adopted today?
Yeah. Madam President, I'd like to 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 request that we suspend the rules and consider this ordinance today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Move for adoption.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? We have quite a few.
Yes, Madam President, I have, actually have a couple. First one is an ordinance amending the budget for Fund 002, the American Rescue Plan. I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. We've talked about this budget before, but this budget is in line with the funding received from the federal government regarding the American Rescue Plan. It's it spells out the the specific buckets being revenue loss, infrastructure, crime prevention, and nonprofit agencies. The total for this budget is $19,905, $19,905,709.
Okay. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, I have one additional item. It's a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Plaza Cotton Storage LLC. I'd like to ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is a lease agreement, once again, with Plaza Plaza Cotton Storage LLC. It's a six-month lease at $9,000 per month, and the location is the is the Gaston Air Force, I'm sorry, the Gaston Air Depot Building. And the building numbers are T, 4, A, and B.
Okay. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Let me go ahead, all right. Thank you, Madam President. I have three that come from the Engineering Department. Assuming I can, you need to combine them all together and read them all at one time? Or you want to do it one at a time?
Either way.
It's my choice, okay, all right. Well, let's start with, this is, comes from the Engineering Department by way of the Legal Department. This is for the Resolution Authorizing Agreement with the EE Group Incorporated. This is to execute an agreement in the amount of $4,200 between the City of Gaston and EE Group Incorporated to complete the engineering design for four auxiliary upgrades at the Gaston Sports Park. I'll just do them one at a time so we can talk about them individually. I'd like to bring it up for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have consent.
All right, move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? I know we talked about this at length during the pre-council meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to ask Heath if you would, if you wouldn't mind to to tell us about these. These are pretty important, and I'm probably not going to remember everything that you said. It's pretty detailed, so if you wouldn't mind to tell us about this, the EE Group.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So the auxiliary upgrades are primary, primarily it is for infrastructure, for wifi and cameras at the sports park. Our engineer has designed a, basically the conduit and cabling required to install devices in the near future that will supply wifi and additional cameras. And we had said during the pre-council session, we do have cameras on site now by trailer. We've got security on site now, both through the the Police Department and Gaston State Community Colleges Security Forces. But this will give us the ability to add additional. And so, like I said, it will cover the sports park, both on Phase 1, those existing buildings at the main athletic field. Phase 2 at the press box that's currently in construction, it will plumb everything there to receive devices as well. And then pending a vote coming up, Phase 3 will also add some, or adds the design for the necessary features to it as well.
All right, well, thanks. Then stay close by for the other two.
I'm just going out.
All right, thanks.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. Madam President, I have another one from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3485 Gaston State Sports Park Phase 3 project. This is bid seized and opened on October 6 from Bob Smith Construction Incorporated in the amount of $5,783,427. And this is, I guess, would like to ask for unanimous consent?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I would again defer to City Engineer Heath Williamson to explain what we're doing here.
Yes, sir, so Phase 3 of the sports park, it includes what we've termed a champions field. A lot of folks know it as a handicap accessible field or a, it's used by different, different names, a miracle field, et cetera. So it is a handicap accessible field. We'll have a synthetic surface both for baseball, softball. It has a integrated soccer field in the outfield. Of course, fencing around it, just like you would a normal baseball slash softball field. It's just the the added design or the the features for the soccer and the outfield. Shade cell structures, bleachers, consistent design with our Phase 2 for the the softball fields. It adds a revamped parking lot. So on that side, if if you're, or here's aren't familiar with the area, the existing Phase 2 softball fields, this Phase 3 will be south of that where there's an existing track and asphalt parking lot location. So basically revamping that entire area. Again, there'll still be parking in that area, but it will be changed to facilitate the improvements. Four pickleball courts. You'll see on the on the detailed documents, the base bid includes these features I've discussed, additive alternate number one, adds sports lighting to the champions field, and then additive alternate number two adds an existing, or adds, I'm sorry, an additional parking structure or parking lot in between the Phase 1 fields and the existing soccer fields. With that additive alternate incorporates sidewalks to tie in all of the phases together for easier off-road access. So that's kind of a gist.
And I'll add, this is not only a local draw, but it'll be a regional draw as families will be able to utilize this facility for years to come, and and the sidewalks are important. I've been over there on Saturday mornings, and there's a lot of traffic, and there's a lot of cars, and there's a lot of people. And so the sidewalks are needed for safety reasons and for ease of getting from one place to another, from concessions to restrooms, back to the field, so.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, Madam President, the last one that I have also comes from the Engineering Department by way of the Legal Department. This is for amending fiscal year 2023 budget for the Gaston Sport, Sports Park Phase 3 project. Let's see, get to the This is by ordinance number 0-35-22, so fiscal year 22 budget is further amended by transferring $1,783,427 from the Fund 340, unassigned fund balance into account number 340-6500-451.70, which is simply the Gaston State Sports Complex Fund. The funds will be used for the Gaston Sports Park Phase 3 project. I move for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. This has been requested by the EMA. It's a resolution authorizing acceptance of requests for purchase from the Title International. It's my understanding that this is part of our has this material emergency preparedness program. We received a grant to do a study on essentially the runoff of hazardous materials from commodity plants, commodity flow study, and I think this also incorporates some strategic planning for when we have hazardous materials moving through the area in the event of a spill or something. We'll have a plan in place so that we'll know exactly what's coming through the area and how to, how to address it. So I would ask for immediate consideration of that.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Just for what it's worth, I think the total cost of this is $48,000, and I think that's that's a match program, again, with the hazardous materials. I don't want to get this wrong. Hazardous material, materials emergency preparedness grant from the Alabama Emergency Management Agency. But I'd ask, move to adopt on this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President. It's my pleasure to bring this up. It's awarding bid number 3485 for a new senior wellness center project where the old AAH Community Center is. Like to bring this up under new business, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I worked on this project a long, long time trying to get all this over there. This is probably the biggest boost Alabama City's had in quite some while. The bid is for $4,741,000 submitted by Boettner Construction Company. I just think this is going to help the neighborhood and the community over there. Maybe we can start getting some of our stuff back over there, and some of the people start taking more pride in this area over there. That's all I had.
All right. Bring it up?
Yeah, that's it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And just to add to, I think our library director said anything that was historical and definitely of value, that they went through and got it out. So it probably will be housed again somewhere else, but we want to thank you for doing that.
Madam President, just to add to that, too, I want to make it clear, I believe the funds for this project were come, came from the American Rescue Plan funding and not from the general budget, so.
And also, Madam President, the Banks Park Fire Station that came out of the same funds, it didn't cost a seat of guests and anything for that either.
And that was a great addition to District 5. And that was a great addition to District Five. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, that was a great addition to District Six. Some people just want stuff in District Five. Maybe this next time they'll get something in District Five.
Thank you for all the help.
Yeah, I thank you for all the help on that, being said. No, I'm kidding aside, it is for Five and Six.
It's for everybody, yeah.
Everybody over there, and it's closer to the school. It's got a lot of, it's closer response time to our high school over there also.
Mm-hmm.
Department reports. I believe our city engineer has a, a report.
Yes, ma'am. Just real quick, I wanted to update the council. The Low Head Dam Removal Project is actually in progress now, as we speak. That contractor moved in yesterday, and I believe he is installing some, the erosion sedimentation controls today, and expects to actually start chipping away at the dam this afternoon if his, if his other pieces arrive as expected. Certainly would ask the public to stay away for, for a bit, as it isn't an active construction zone. But just, again, very happy, council decided to go forward with the agreement. So this was a partnership between the city, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and their funding arm, which is Kewahka. And so I can also say, learned yesterday that there is a media event being planned by the Fish and Wildlife and Kewahka side that also obviously incorporates us, tentatively on the twenty-eighth at ten a.m. in the morning. Once that's confirmed, I'll certainly get the details out, but didn't want to make you aware that that has begun.
Can you tell us, Heath, how much that project's gonna cost the city of guests?
So our portion of the agreement took advantage of the funding that we had already spent, which was about fifty-five thousand, to obtain the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering permit with all the design and surveying that was required for that. Now that we're in the construction phase, our portion of the agreement is basically supplying our in-house services. So they will purchase any rock that's required to be brought in. We will just use our personnel and trucks to haul that rock, and then as we take the dam out, or as that contractor removes the dam, they'll actually stabilize the banks and use as much as they can on-site. And should there be any additional debris that needs to leave the site, our personnel will take that to our own C and D landfill. So no more dollars expended outside of our, our, our use of manpower and equipment. I will say, and I don't have it on the top of my head for exact figure, but the funding from the Kewahka and the Fish and Wildlife is between four and five hundred thousand dollars.
It was four seventy-one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
In that project, right there.
I, I knew the range, but not the exact. So, yeah, we were very excited to get that. That was a.
You know, the first time we looked at that, it was like, our part was gonna be like six twenty-five, I think, to do it, if we had to do it ourselves.
Yeah, sure.
We waited and got this money here, and so it didn't cost us anything but manpower and just labor, that's it.
Absolutely.
And I apologize, Heath, I was distracted there for a second. Did you give a timeline on when you expect that to be completed?
I would think two to three weeks. I will touch base with that contractor, actually, after our meetings today. I hadn't had a chance to meet him on-site, talked to him on the phone and by email, but I'll get a, an updated schedule, just to, now he's getting his feet on the ground, and, and we'll see what that schedule looks like.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If nothing else, we'll have remarks. Councilman Reed?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I, once again, I want to say how proud I am of this council for everything they've done the last two years. We've built a lot of stuff, we've moved a lot of dirt. Nobody up here did anything by theirself. It takes all this councilman together and this administration to get this stuff done. You know, we, neither one of us can take credit for one project because we're all in this together. And I hope the new city council that takes office, I realize that, that everybody's in this together, and sometimes you gotta give a little bit and take a little bit. This is not a, like a one-man show. I mean, we take credit for a lot of stuff, but, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, without these guys up here, and mayor's office and staff in there, and engineering department, we couldn't do anything. And Ms. Ivan, the clerk's office, they help us a bunch, so. There's a lot of moving parts to all this, and I just want everybody to know that none of us has done any of this by ourself. Thank you.
Did you want to remark or go down with the?
Yeah, sure. I mean, Deverick, you wanna?
Councilman, really, Councilman Ba.
I'll be, all right. Thank you, Madam President. I want to recognize incoming councilwoman Dixie Manatra for being here today. Hello, Dixie. Glad to see you. And in sitting in front of her is Mayor-elect Craig Ford, and I want to recognize you, Mayor Ford, Mayor-elect Ford, and also want to say thank you. The Plaza Cotton Storage Lease was brought to the city by Mayor-elect Ford and his team. I think that's evidence that they fit the ground running. There's a lot of activity going on. There's, there's, they're not letting any daylight go by that they're not burning. So we, we appreciate the help with that. That's nine thousand a month for six months, and I know there's other things that are in the works as well, so thank you very much. Good to see you here today. The sports park, you know, we just, there's a lot of stuff going on over there, and a big thanks to Heath Williamson, and also thank you for, I didn't let, I didn't tell you, I was gonna ask you to, to speak and to explain that, but thanks for always being ready to do that. I, I never hesitate to call on you, because I know that you have all that information, and, and you're working at it daily, so thank you for what you do over there. I've been over there a lot in the last month with my granddaughter playing soccer, and it is a fantastic facility, and it's not completed. I can't wait to see it in its entirety, when everything's done, and especially the champions field. What a great draw that's gonna be for our community, and what a great service to our community for those that are, that qualify for that type of a facility. It is just gonna be wonderful. And when you do things like that, certainly makes you feel good, but it also serves a great public purpose, which is what our city and federal state tax dollars should be used for. So just stay tuned to the sports park. There's some really good things going on over there. And also recently, and I can't remember all the details, but I'll just do a blanket thank you to the Friends of the Falls. Glenn Ingram, I know, was involved in that, and he's a friend of mine, so I'll call his name. There's many others that are involved. Councilman-elect Chris Robinson is, is one of the leaders of that group. They work tirelessly at the, at the Falls. They use a lot of their own money, they use a lot of their own time, and they really improve Nakalula Falls all the time, through their efforts, through them bringing grants, through just awareness, helping host events. Nakalula Falls would look a lot different if it wasn't for the Friends of the Falls. That's not to say our city departments don't do a wonderful job up there, because they do, but the Friends of the Falls is a very, very needed and welcome component to what goes on at Nakalula Falls, so thank you to that group. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, and now for the two Ws, William and Wilson.
While they're coming forth, Madam President, let me say, I don't think we gave Mr. Davis total credit, or any credit for that sports park, because he has been a big part of that sports complex, big time. Thank you. Frankie.
Who?
Frankie Davis.
Oh.
You threw me off when you said Mr. Davis.
I would second that, Ben. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I just wanted to give it a minute, that's all.
Yeah.
Because I know what he went through pushing all these guys to get it done.
All right, and Councilman Wilson, you, you know that, you said, you said that you had to be somewhere.
This is five after twenty.
For the record, I said I have a speaking engagement at Gaston High School this afternoon. It wasn't like I'd just go and eat lunch.
All right.
These are structured comments, so you'll be fine.
All right.
So, Madam President, we do appreciate the opportunity. Councilman Wilson and I are sitting here today because the process that involved reforming of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, the commissioning of that committee by the council, and, and the many meetings that the subcommittee conducted, the caucusing, the studying, the evaluating of, of input from various subject matter experts, has been completed. All that process has been completed, and we are now prepared to make some recommendations to the mayor and council. I'm gonna hit these at a high level as not to, as not to drag, drag this out, but, but I do want to highlight a couple of things that, you know, we, again, conducted a number of meetings. Do want to, again, thank a couple of guest speakers that we had along the way. Ron Hall Jr., who's the CEO of Bridgewater Interiors, and Camille Agricola Bowman, who's a subject matter expert, expert relative to historical matters and, and conservation Early in the process, the committee agreed to place its focus on five primary topics. Those five, five primary topics are hiring, housing, education, police, and community interaction, and culture. And so based on those, the discussions and the input related to those items, the committee comes with these recommendations. Now, there's, there's some general recommendations, that the mayor and the city council should deploy strategic and measurable remedies with a good faith effort component. It needs to be clear that the city, the mayor, the council made a good faith effort to, 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 to deploy many of these suggestions. The diversity, equity, and inclusion isn't simply about doing what's right, it's, it's also smart governance. And when a local government looks like the community it serves, it, it is perceived as being more legitimate and elicits greater cooperation from its constituents. One of the things that we're asking is that we draw a clear distinction between equality and equity. Equity is the argument that, that really needs to be made nowadays. Within this memo, we put a little graphic here. Equality shows three children, one probably age seven, one age three, and another age one. And they're all standing on a platform that's about the same size. And as you can imagine, the kid that's seven-year-old, seven-years-old is actually seeing, they're watching a baseball game. Kid that's seven can see the game pretty clearly. The one that's, that's three can see it a little bit, a little less clearly than the seven-year-old, but he can see it, and he can see it much better than the one-year-old. The equity graphic shows the seven-year-old not standing on a platform at all, no, no help, no assistance. The three-year-old standing on a platform, and the one-year-old standing on two platforms. And they're all at the same eye level. And the purpose of that, again, is just showing that racial justice is about equity. It's not about equality. We're long past equality. I don't have any legacy wealth to speak of, so everything I do nowadays, it's gotta work, because I don't have any, any, any backstops, don't have anybody to fall back on. And, and that didn't happen by accident. It's not because my parents were idiots, or my, or my descendants were idiots. They weren't given a chance in many respects. And so the equity argument needs to be, the equity lens needs to be applied when we view essentially everything relative to city government. Be certain to draw a contrast between quotas and targets. I bring that up because when we launched the inclusion program that's been on the books since 2015, one of my mentors and my favorite people ever is Mr. Bob Echols. And the one concern that he had back then was, Deverick, I don't want quotas. My, my district is not gonna be okay with quotas. And I had to remind him, what we're talking about is equity, Mr. Echols, it's not quotas. We're talking about good faith efforts. And that's when we sold it. That's when he understood that it was a good, good idea. And so do want to make sure we draw the contrast, because, again, we are still in a southern state, and talking about equity is a difficult conversation for people who don't really understand why it's important to talk about. And so, 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 again, we want to make sure that, that, that those points are driven home. Before I miss the point, the mayor and the council will all be given a copy of this memo, along with the media, so that it can be shared publicly. As, as I mentioned earlier, I think this is important enough to where each topic should probably be addressed media-wise individually, but I have no control over that, so, again, you, you guys get a chance to, to handle that how you want, but, but I definitely think that's, it's, it's that important. Hiring. The big, one of the big points that's been made, I do thank incoming Mayor Craig Ford for his, for taking the initiative to say upfront that he plans to appoint a D and I individual to his cabinet. Think that's important. And so that's one of the recommendations. That person should focus on goal-setting, measuring against goals annually, to make sure that you, you don't miss what's been presented, and requiring an annual review of the city's compliance to the aforementioned Gaston Inclusion Program. The program, the inclusion program is already on the books, and so all the committee is asking is that we measure, that we grade the city against that program. The city should also be deliberate about, the city should also be deliberate about presenting images of a diverse community. Now, examples of that are photos and paintings on wall in City Hall. Currently, they're all of white males. And so one of the things that I would ask is that we be deliberate about showing young people. Right now, on my Facebook page, there is a photograph that was taken of President, then President Barack Obama, and he's bending over, and he's letting a little black kid touch his hair. And the story behind that is the little boy says, is his hair like mine? And Mr., and, and President Obama leaned over and said, well, why don't you touch it and see? And so that's important. Young black people, females, and, and, and young people from any group need to know that these, that being an elected official, being a mayor, being a department head, being a police officer, being a fire chief, being a fireman, all those things are attainable for them. They need to see those examples. And so, again, it's important that we continue to focus on, on those images. Social media content, promotional content. Anytime we take the opportunity to do any of that, make sure it represents a diverse community. Department name change. For me, this is a big one. The city of Gaston might have the last Personnel Department that I'm aware of, all right? So, so I think it's a great opportunity for us to change the name, change the label from Personnel to Human Resources Department, because I think it's more contemporary and it fits the mission better. Establish partnerships with HBCUs and professional trade groups that can help us put minorities and females into our candidate pipelines. And develop a leadership succession plan. I know this is hard in a public entity, but what, what scares me more than anything as a citizen of, of the city of Gaston is, you don't always know what tomorrow's gonna bring when you have turnover. And so business continuity is something that we've got to focus on, and let's make sure that when we put together those leadership plans, that we include, put in the pipeline, high-potential minority and female people. Because that's the only way you can ensure that your leaders tomorrow will be diverse. You're not deliberate about it, it's not gonna happen on its own, so you have to be very deliberate about that. Again, just hitting some high points with housing, we, we're recommending that we seriously consider housing partnerships to develop affordable housing. Examples of that might be the Greenbrier Management Group and Land Bank Authority, and their partnership to create an inventory of decent and affordable housing. Securing commitments from financial institutions to allow for capital infusion in community, in minority and poor communities. Enhancing the economic development mechanism by adding a residential development authority. This is a specific recommendation that Councilman Wilson made. And then formulating a residential development strategy, or a, or a master plan. Newsflash, those things are expensive. Those master plans are expensive, and many times they get purchased and put on the shelf, and they, they collect dust. And so what I would encourage the incoming mayor and council to remember is that if you're gonna do that and spend the money, be prepared to act on it, because there will be some good suggestions and remedies that, that'll come out of it. Education, again, partnering with industry on curriculum development. I think that's the big, biggest miss that we've had over the last twenty years. We're producing a product for industry to use, but we don't allow them many times anyway. We don't allow them to come to the table and help us prepare the curriculum. And so there needs to be a very clear partnership with industry as it relates to that. Supporting a clear collaboration between Gaston State, Gaston City High School and Gaston State. I know I'm not the only one that, that, that notices that over the years, they've worked together, but that collaboration hasn't always been very clear. So let's not, let's not play with that one. Let's make sure that that collab- So, let's not, let's not play with that one. Let's make sure that that collaboration is clear. And I think Mr. Reddick and Dr. Murphy are definitely keen to make that happen, so I appreciate them in advance. Highlighting Gaston State as a premier resource to promote diversity initiatives. Utilizing their HBCU campus as a springboard for ideas and a repository for resources. That is a huge resource for soliciting funding, for soliciting ideas, for soliciting input. It shouldn't go underutilized, and I do, again, appreciate Dr. Murphy in advance because she's committed to making sure that that piece happens. Reeducating the community on what caused the federal consent decree and deploy strategies to avoid a repeat. That was an ugly time for this city, when our school system was under a consent decree, when they had to be told that you have to, out of every three hires, one of them has to be a minority, or one of them has to be a female. You know, what that means is the federal government said, "You're not gonna do it on your own, so we have to tell you to do it." And you don't want to go back there. And as I look at the faces across this room, a lot of people have forgotten that, yeah, that was a thing at one point. And so, again, the way you repeat those, the way you avoid repeating those kind of things is you educate, you educate the next generation that, hey, this happened, and we don't want that to happen again. And so, again, I think it's important to make sure that we talk about that, to avoid a repeat. And then promote career tech by the same means that we talked about earlier. Promotional videos, outdoor advertising, print advertising, social media, all of those things. You've got to promote career tech because most of our kids are not gonna go to college. The vast majority of them are gonna do something other than secure a college degree, so let's prepare them. Let's prepare them to be successful. Establish an achievable target for citizens with ready-to-work credentials in the city. What we're suggesting is by 2023, 30 percent. By 2024, 40 percent. And by 2025, 50 percent, again, with a ready-to-work credential. And establish an achievable target for citizens with post-secondary credentials, post-secondary credentials, basically with a college degree of some kind, community college or up. By 2022, right now, it's 15 percent. And we wonder why we're not like Huntsville when it comes to economic development. There's your reason right there. You can't be like Huntsville at 15 percent of your citizens having a college degree. Not gonna happen. 2023, the target should be 25 percent. 2024, 30 percent. Those are all achievable, probably too low, to be honest, but, again, I think you have to set them at an attainable level so that the community can be proud of something that it's achieved and build on, and I think that's important. Policing community interaction. Reappoint a presiding minority municipal judge. Let's be, let's be quite honest about this thing. Our circuit courts lack a diversity, inclusion, and equity perspective. Our circuit courts are elected, they will never have a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective because they're elected. And so, because they're countywide elected. And so, our biggest opportunity to give a humanizing experience to minorities in the courtroom is for the city to appoint minority judges. We've been fortunate to have done that for the last four years, and I think we, I think this mayor and council should continue it. So, again, I think it's important for the incoming mayor and the council to consider that. Relaunch some police training. Our police department in the past has done the humanities and law enforcement training, and I think COVID was a big reason why they had to back off of that, and I think through the Alabama Humanities Alliance, they should relaunch that training. I think it's free. I don't think that training cost us anything, and I think those groups are dying to support us. Of course, we've heard the suggestion about mental health skills training for officers, and I think our department is taking steps on that. Continue to launch community engagement training for officers. We make mention of the, we make mention of the Mental Health Crisis Response Team, the project that was launched by Judge Scott Hassel. We're already providing some funding in support of that. That's an easy one for us to check off and continue to push forward with. We also need to engage in a campaign to promote policing to young people, women, and minorities. Right now, we're recruiting, but I don't know how much of a good faith effort that we're engaging in to specifically focus on and target those groups. Young people, women, and minorities. So, again, let's be deliberate about that because that's our next pipeline of candidates. We've got to make sure that we're focusing on that group. And then the last one is probably the most controversial one, but it's probably one of the most important ones, and that's the cultural aspect. I think the Human Relations Committee, Advisory Committee should be made permanent. I think they should be able to make ongoing suggestions to the mayor and the council. We need to take a look at phasing out and removing symbols of white supremacy, conducting the necessary legal reviews, and launching a theme-driven campaign. And that theme-driven campaign should carry a theme either equivalent to or alike showing the world that we are one community, better than our past. We are one community that's better than our past. I would like the council to consider, and I think the committee, the committee would like the council to consider a commitment for no future naming of streets, buildings, programs, facilities after Civil War-era segregationist and white supremacist figures. We should also, we should also consider ensuring diversity within the makeup of all of our committees and boards, and also establish youth groups that mimic these boards and committees as well. One of the things that got highlighted in our discussions is that our young people just don't understand what goes on in those, in those meetings, what goes on in those boardrooms. And so, it's a great opportunity to allow them to mimic and understand and learn what's going on there. Promote unity-oriented events. We have a lot of events around the city. There's no lack of activity in the city. But, but just like some Sunday mornings, we're pretty, we're pretty divided as it relates to those events because the genres don't meet everybody where they want to attend. So, name it unity, call it unity, bring a promoter that promotes unity, and bring everybody together for one event. At least one event every year. I think that's important, and that'll do a lot. We already have L R Y Media on the hook. They are the ones that did the opening and closing ceremonies for the World Games. We're already using them at the venue. So, this is a great opportunity to continue to utilize them. And there are some other things that I'll, that I'll skip over. One of the things that's probably important to Councilman Wilson is to assist in the preservation of Southern Hills Cemetery. This is the cemetery at the end of South Sixth Street. It's, and what I would like, it's been added to the Alabama Historical Cemetery Registry. What I think this committee would like the city to consider is committing public works, resources, and legal support in support of this cemetery in much the same way that we've supported cemeteries, other cemeteries across the city. And so, again, I want to thank Councilman Wilson for co-chairing this committee with me, for being very supportive in a number of the activities. I want to thank every member of the committee who attended meetings and provided input. I think these recommendations are not extreme. They're very even-handed, and they represent positive change for the community. And, again, I think it's important. I think, I think Councilman Back, Councilman Back may have mentioned some time ago about us re-envisioning and remaking ourselves as a city, and I think this is a great opportunity to support that effort, for us to relaunch ourselves as a city and re-present ourselves as a unified city.
Thank you, Councilman Williams, and thank you for, again, letting me be a part of this. We all know that this was something that's been going on for a couple of years now, and I just want to touch on the things that really matter to me out of all this that we learned over dozens and dozens of meetings and conversations with people all throughout the city. Number one is the idea of the Residential Development Authority. You know, we have an IDA, we have an Industrial Development Authority that focuses on industrial development and recruitment. We have a Commercial Development Authority that focuses on commercial development and recruitment. But the fact of the matter is, over 40 percent of Gaston residents are renters, and we do not have a Residential Development Authority that works to bring developers like Greenbrier that the Land Bank Authority has been working with to build affordable houses and affordable apartment complexes in this community, and we are in desperate need of it, especially given the rising values of homes. We all got our new tax assessments in the mail recently within the last couple of months. We all know the value of property is going up all around this community. Unfortunately, there's no real data to show that wages are going up at the same rate, that property values are going up. So, that puts even more stress on the poorest and the lowest income residents in our community, so we have to have a Residential Development Authority. I'm working with the Bannon Group out of Birmingham right now on some affordable housing projects, and that needs to continue. And the last thing I'll talk about is this idea of the Southern Hills Cemetery. You know, we covered a lot of stuff about how we could make this community more inclusive and focus on equity. And probably the most glaring example of that, or opportunity for that to me, is the Southern Hills Cemetery, which is in District Five at the end of Sixth Street. Some of you may know it as the Sixth Street Cemetery. It is an absolute travesty to me. It's one of the most shameful parts of this city to me, the parts that I'm most embarrassed of. There are military veterans that are buried in that cemetery over there with trees growing up through their graves where cemetery plots have been totally vandalized, where markers and headstones have been kicked over and left for nothing, and there is a small group of people, white and black, which is the most beautiful part of this city to me, that go out there and volunteer their time on a regular basis to clear all those branches and all that brush and all that debris away from these cemetery plots and bring them back to a respectable place. And unfortunately, because of the legal chess match that is how cities manage cemeteries, we have the Forest Cemetery, obviously, which was not a cemetery that the city built. That was built by a private entity and later gifted to the city of Gaston. And so, now the city of Gaston legally has to care for that cemetery forever, in perpetuity. So, the Southern Hills Cemetery was not gifted to the city, and so therefore, it receives no funding or support from the city. And I just think that we have got to focus on a way to overcome those legal challenges and provide some simple support, be it help from the Public Works Department in cutting the grass and maintaining the roads over there. That's something that is a passion project of mine, and I'll continue to work hard on it. So, again, thank you, Councilman Williams, for letting me be a part of this, and I look forward to working with Mayor-elect Ford and the new administration and the new council to try to hopefully implement some of these things to make it a better place for all of us to live. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.